Well Linda, if you'll leave us in the prayer, we'll listen to the, I mean Johnny and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Please watch over us as we travel back and forth, watch over our children as they travel. Please help them goddess as we go through our meeting tonight, Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Randy Rents, Beau Gordon, Melinda Ballard, Baring Glass, Maria Bass, here, Gary Castles, Johnny Fallon, here.
Executive Committee report that they made us vote for the night. Sales taxes were down again for the month of January compared to last year. For the year, we're off $102,000 on sales taxes. Hopefully that will improve in the second half of this, of our fiscal year. And other than that, I'll be, review all the checks, everything's in order.
Brandon, you said one of two, that's, it hasn't been that, like a year. I mean, have we been able to identify with what may be some of the causes, at least one of the causes? Because it seems like every month is going up.
Well, that is the fact that people are trying to save money rather than spend money right now. And I couldn't tell you. I wish I knew what was in everybody's brain.
Does this affect 13 tip? Oh sure?
And that's why we try to do a big push either around Christmas time, shop local as much as you can. If you can't buy what you need here in the parish, order it and have it delivered so that you can have the sales taxes applied here and so.
Well, those are subliminal questions. So it doesn't understand that when those checks come out, it's not us cutting them, it's because we don't have the money to, you know, to provide. So it's more than informative, of course, than anything.
Okay, we need to, we're reading minutes for the last board meeting and ask for approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes to the meeting of last month.
I second.
At the same time, we, the executive committee, I'll just make a quick comment on this. The executive committee met this past week and we discussed several things as far as the budget and trying to get raises to some, to some of our, some of our support people. We're continuing to work on that and we're continuing, you know, throw things out there and everybody's working together trying to just throw stuff against the wall and see who can stick to ours, you know, kind of figure out something that'll work and work good for everybody.
Well, Brandon, when y'all.
That's all, that's, you know, that's basically what we stand on.
When y'all are doing it, can you consider all options on the table?
We're trying to consider all options.
Yeah, I mean, and that, I'm coming from the least to the most, because if you're talking about over the last year, excuse me, those numbers have been going up, 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 up. Student population across the state is dwindling. If the Department of Education is cut out, we don't know what the result of that is going to be. So money that used to be there may not be there. And if it's not there, you're going to have to look at the most restricted things. So I think you prepare for that before you get there.
That's what we're trying to do and it's, it's, it's.
But that's the last hope.
We're looking at all our options.
Yeah, okay.
But we're not going to throw anything out as far as we voted on or as far as the public until we have something that we feel lives will work and we're best to get a lot involved. But yeah, we can't keep bleeding the way we're believing. We can't do that. At this point, we want to recognize our Employee of the Month, Michelle Jones.
Thank you. Getting there's one. I get to brag on one of your own, but let me just go ahead and just say it this time, she's hers by way of me. When I saw her name, when Kaylee said it, I went, I know who this girl is. So this young lady, I'm going to get on script in a moment. But in her former, earlier in her career, she worked directly with me and her mother was my student teacher, remember? Her mother was getting her degree. So I can say a whole lot about her, but I'll get on script and tell you all what she said about her. Michelle is always so happy and willing to help anyone. She is always so positive and patient in every situation and she never lets frustration show in difficult situations. She's always willing to help and lend a hand to her elders. Michelle's a wonderful person all around and a great role model to her coworkers. She's a great teacher and does a great job with the students. She is a wonderful coworker and friend and has the biggest heart and is always doing a little something extra for all of us. I am a better person because she is in my life. And so Michelle works at your, she's teaching back in, back in her elementary in pre-K. And so I am so proud to be able to stand before you tonight to give this award to your February 2025 Caldwell Parish School Board Employee of the Month, Michelle Jones, for her dedication and commitment to the community, schools, and children proudly sponsored by Pelican Benefit Advisors. Your Employee of the Month is Michelle Jones.
Each, each month, there's a 15-minute speech that. And to know her, she's okay, I feel like, oh no.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
It's pre-K.
Tell us something about it.
Well, she's always there and she does, she always has a smile on her face. She's very innovative. She's got some tough kids in her class, she's going to tough class this year. And I've never seen her not smile.
And she's from, that she drives about 45 minutes every day to work here, so.
She's passing up other places she could be.
Yep, I love, I love my school. It's a wonderful work family. I'm very supportive, very happy there.
All right, we'll move on to, now we recognize Penny Sue Brown as Bus Driver of the Year.
Hello Penny. It is definitely my privilege to present Penny with the Caldwell Parish School District Bus Driver of the Year Award. Definitely, my two and a half years that I've been the Transportation Director, I have witnessed her excellence, her dedication to the students of Caldwell Parish, and it's been going on now for over 25 years that you have been employed with the system and then also serving as a bus operator. So without a doubt, Penny, I appreciate your dedication to the school and I would like to present you with this certificate. Penny will also be recognized in May by PCOW, who we nominate for the Bus Driver of the Year. They will come and also present her with an award at that time in our reception inmate. So Penny, thank you very much for your dedication.
Well, I started before my daughter was born. It's been over 35 years, just seven, didn't have a full-time route. So when I've had a chance to get on, where'd she go? There she is. Ms. McKee helped me so much on pushing me, it's like, okay, we finna get your license. Soon as I got my license and I was hired on, I mean, just not even, I was just seven, she's like, you finna drive my bus? And I'm like, oh, I've never drove your route. She said, don't matter, you fit to drive my bus. And so she did. So she's helped me out so much. And, but anyway, I do love my kids. I've watched them many, I mean, I see them now that I'm driving grand, their, their kids. So I'm like, oh my gosh. So yeah, I have drove their kids and starting on some others. So, but anyway, I do appreciate it. I do thank y'all. And it's been, you know, I'm still, I'm not, I'm not quit.
But not.
Until the good Lord says, I'm not leaving. You may be leaving one day, but I'm not leaving. Till the good Lord says, okay, it's your turn.
That's what we want to hear. Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, next on the agenda is the examining official tag. Y'all got this in your. We need a motion to appoint the Caldwell Parish School Board Committees for 2025. I believe I sent all y'all, hopefully y'all got, if you want it, y'all got everything that I sent yesterday, that other day, as far as the committees for this year.
And Bonnie's sitting with us.
This is the same one for last year. The only thing that's changed is that Beau goes to building grounds and Maria goes to the Policy Committee, Policy Committee, Personnel Committee.
Mr. Boyden, you weren't here, so we kind of, I felt like you needed to be a part of whatever committee that you chose. So if, I don't know if y'all have any disagree.
Any of Maria moves to Policy and then Beau goes to what?
To building grounds.
Okay, gotcha.
Were there any other changes?
That's it.
Call my commission, we accept each committee's, it's shown.
On favor. Now we examine the official tabulation of the property tax renewal on December, December 7. Of course, it passed by 66.6%. We sure do appreciate the support of this parish. We appreciate the support of everybody in this parish, of our school system. There's so many things that we would love to do that we, that we can't do. And though without this, these, without the support that we get from everybody in this parish, we would definitely have our hands tied in many, many ways. So we are definitely appreciative of all the support that we get from the people in this parish.
A motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
On favor. David here?
You're up. I was in the audit, and that's in the spiral binder. And I gave y'all a good recap, three pages. It would be very great. But turn to page 15 of the audit report.
David, I want to congratulate you for giving that to us early.
Well, we appreciate all, all the support. And we're, we're real, we're.
Just keep it up, just keep it up.
I have no idea how real we are.
Just keep it up.
Anyway, page 15 is the balance sheet. And I'm just going to look at the total columns, cash, cash and cash equivalents, $8.1 million. That, that includes receivables, $3.4 million. One point, we're right at $2 million is property tax. That's protested taxes.
That's still that's out there.
That's still protested taxes.
Have we heard anything on it?
Nothing's changed. So still.
But it's collected interest, right?
I'm not sure.
Well, it should be, if it's just shit, right?
When I was talking, when I was talking to Scott Meredith the other day, I had made a comment about that and he said, no, I think it's varying interest.
Yeah.
I'm not confirming that with the Sheriff's Office. I always thought that those paid in protest accounts, paid in protest taxes could not be in an interest-bearing account. Scott thinks they are, so.
I've always thought there were two.
So, so hopefully they are. And whoever gets the money, I think it'll be us, gets the interest as well. So if we happen to lose, then they'll get the interest.
It's actually years we live down now. Is the, is next year just rolling over?
Two, three?
They're going six.
Really?
Six.
Paid in protest taxes.
Oh, because yeah, because it's been recurring every year.
Yes, it rolled to about six.
Oh, six? I thought it was just three.
Had they paid us for four? I thought it was just two?
No, no, we got years, 19 and 20 that are in one lawsuit, maybe 21. And then the other years are in a different lawsuit. And paid in protest for this year that just ended, calendar year 24, was another $750,000 that was protested. 60% of the bill.
So is it a timeframe only being stalemate? We don't know?
We don't know. It's all in the court's hands. So.
Well, I mean, they either need to pay it or they get their money back. I mean, I don't see the purpose of holding somebody up.
I don't see that either.
But, but it's important that we support education and you're doing something totally opposite of supporting education, right?
And, and the hardest thing is you don't even know who to complain to. Like, I don't know who to go be, like a squeaky wheel to, like, get this done. You're, there's.
I don't want to be ignorant, but this was six years ago and I have no idea what we're talking about.
We got one company that is protesting the payment of taxes.
Their property taxes.
Their property taxes. Basically equates to on, on an individual level, if a person has a three-bedroom house and, and a mother-in-law's house, you know, off to the side, and the mother-in-law moves out, they're protesting, well, I shouldn't have to pay on that property because nobody's living in it. That's the, kind of the concept.
But the property is still occupied.
But the property is still there.
It's still in use?
Even if it's not in use.
Right, it's still, it's still there, right.
So, and that's kind of where the argument is, is that they were saying, well, we're not using that capacity of pipeline.
Oh, they're using it.
Not to.
And it's not by your house.
It's right by my house, out here.
Well, I understand that, but it's not in full, I mean, I don't remember the numbers, but you know, say they built a three, a 30-foot pipeline. And they're using all, you know, what would it play to a one-foot pipeline?
Oh, okay.
And unless they go dig it up, they have the asset. So it's, it's like the mother-in-law's house. Unless the house burns, it's still got the asset. So, I mean, if that gets ruled outside of our favor, I mean, that changes a lot of things.
Listen, David, for, for me, it'd be different if we were trying to rob them. We're not, we're just asking to give us what we owe.
Yep.
And which should be common sense. So obviously somebody that's out there can, can tell us, you know, what we need to know. And I think, Brandon, we need to start looking into that tomorrow because six years, look, look at what that money could have done. And we're sitting there talking about paying, you know, raises and all this, that and another. We don't need to be playing, you know, all this politics and all this other aha stuff just to satisfy somebody else. Give us what we owe and we're moving on. That's all we're saying.
How much money are we talking about?
You're talking about millions.
Well, over a million dollars.
Two million, two. We have 2.7 now.
Plus interest, if that's, if it occurs. So you're looking at a pretty good bit of.
I mean, eventually for it. So I will talk to Scott tomorrow and get the attorney to give us a letter saying where, you know, where's the status on this and.
Because it's not just us, it's also the Sheriff's Department and everybody else that's supposed to get their part of it.
Anyway, let's.
So our part with the interest is around 3 million.
Right.
That's not counting the sheriff's.
That's not counting everybody.
I think the big number's probably around six. So I'm in there. I haven't looked back, but. So I'm in there, I'd have to look back, but I think we'll get about half. And then the other, government allies get the other half amongst themselves.
So we all need to start writing letters of listery and the sheriff's department and us together to send.
Oh, that's good.
You got all three entities together with my bill.
Let's do it. Let's do it. That's creative.
And Grayson and Colby. Yep, everybody's got, and, well, let me work it. That's different, they're weird.
It's not weird, but this particular company's still in operation and still legit and still rolling.
They still go by check.
For the rainy days. They're still there, same, they're not.
They're not quite as much as they were, but they do it somewhere else too.
I, I think there was a new pipeline built elsewhere, not by their company, but by another company. And that changed all movement of the gas.
But they knew coming in that they were building it and they owed taxes. I knew that.
And that's all we're saying, give us what we owe and we're done with. That's, that's, that's as simple as it can be.
Yes.
But so have they already filed for twenty-four?
Yep, that's the new seven hundred fifty thousand, above the two million that's in here.
They're contesting twenty-four.
Yep, sixty-five percent.
As long as they keep it tied up, it's fair for them.
I, I mean, really, they don't get anything out of it. I mean, because they paid the money to the sheriff. I mean, the money's sitting in a bank account of the sheriff's.
Yeah, but we can't use it.
That's true.
True. Uh, yeah, but I mean, he's not.
So, I mean, that will.
They're not needing it.
They're not getting, they're not using it either.
It's not like they're avoiding the payment.
Well, they are, 'cause we hadn't gotten the money and we can't use it.
No, we were, I wrote that.
And, and my point is, is just give us what we owe and, and we're done with it.
So they paid the money. And why can't we get it?
By law, it has to sit with the sheriff until it's resolved. The sheriff asked him to pay this one year, I think that was eighteen. And. Now we, we, yeah, that is.
So they can't accidentally give it to you?
Did they accidentally give it to all of it?
I mean, if, if they accidentally gave it one time and didn't get it out. What defines what accident? Clara Arrow's house. No, but seriously, I, I think that's something that we need to look into.
I like the idea of it's already lit.
I don't think we need to sit back any longer. I think we need to, uh, if we have to force quote-unquote to, uh, get what we deserve, uh, because those kids need it, uh, those teachers need it and the system needs it. So the balance should stop and we can move on.
We can be in the black.
Yeah.
Well, the money's already been counted in our financials, so, I mean, it won't change our finances until then, dropping our receipt and increasing cash. On the flip side, I, I mean, if something catastrophic happened and we needed true cash, I mean, we have two million sitting over there that we don't have access to. It'd be better if it's obviously not my.
So we need for sure.
When we have, when we have eight point something million dollars, good, that two million is in there?
No, the eight million is, uh, the two million is part of that three point four million and that's on, on receivables.
Okay, on receivables.
So, um, and out of that three point four million, you know, two million is out, another million is federal and state money. We got all that by July thirty-one. Uh, another two twenty-seven is sales tax, that's the monthly sales tax that we get, obviously, we've looked at that. Further down, accounts payable, that's just what came in after the, uh, year close for gym expenses. Uh, we have two point six million dollars due in salaries and benefits payable, that's for us July and August payrolls for your teachers.
What page do you want, David?
Page fifteen.
What line do you want?
Uh, under liabilities and the fourth line, public liabilities, two hundred two thousand dollars, that's a worker's comp, estimated amount that's payable. And, and, I mean, that, it fluctuates every year and we just adjust it, it's not a cash payment. Then fund balances, we got eight point five million dollars in un, uh, in total fund balance. So, I, I, I mean, it's a healthy balance sheet until you look at the P and L, which is on page seventeen, and you see that we did have a loss. The first column is general fund and we did have two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar loss for that year. And that's the year that we also had four hundred thousand dollars in timber money. So without the timber money, we've been closer to seven hundred thousand dollar decrease. Now, sales taxes down to sixty-five thousand, that's just, uh, a fluctuation there. We ended the year with five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in fund balance. And theoretically, that's a zero balance at the end of the year. So, maybe we're a little bit above that. Non-major, uh, funds, that includes the one debt service fund and then all of the other special revenue funds. And that totals one point nine million dollars in fund balance at the end of the year. So overall, you know, it, the, the expenditures exceeded the revenues unfortunately, again, as was expected and as will be expected until we do something out of our budget. If you have to pay seventy-three, I was standing outside with everybody else talking about, uh, what happens with our federal money.
Please, Joe.
In case, in case it dries up. And, uh, just a quick review, uh, two thousand twenty-four expenditures, I missed your last column, for food service, we received one point two billion dollars. And a little bit further below that, eight hundred seventy-three thousand title one, or title programs, uh, title program. Special ed, four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, COVID money, Ezra money was way up, one, one million dollars. And at the bottom of the page, uh, professional education, two point, plus the three million dollars. On the next page, uh, four hundred thousand dollars in CCDF funds. And then the bottom number, Head Start, was nine hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, that's, that's our biggest program.
I don't think ours is, Department of Ed, ours is helping heal hospitals, which it would be nice to, but.
So, so David, if, if that were, if that were to take place hypothetically, what, what happens, Monica, to your program?
I, I mean, we would be in a significant cash, uh.
It, it, so it, it, basically, you either have it or you don't.
Right.
I mean, if they totally unfunded Head Start, we just, we wouldn't have that.
Right.
Because we, we can't afford to.
But even if they made cuts, it would still affect you, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, right, what you're addressing is on page fifty, when it talks about concentrations. We get thirteen, uh, million dollars from the board of education, or, uh, state, from the state, forty-six percent. And then we get another, uh, six million dollars from the federal government, that's twenty-one percent.
On page fifty?
Yes, sorry, at the very, very bottom of the page.
Okay.
So, um, I, I, I mean, that, that's, that's the reason I noted it there, to emphasize if those funds went away, I, I mean, we'd be in a serious financial.
So Nikki, I'm assuming that you and your team is paying close attention to this.
To what's.
The potential adversities that may happen.
We're just moving along as if it's going to be there.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, we're not just, like, waiting until if it happens, then we're.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Something I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we would just, we would, it would have, it would, it would destroy.
Right, so, I guess I'm, I'm just being a realist. I, I look at what has happened. It's just, nothing is normal now. So I'm looking at stuff as not being normal, which would mean, how will we function if we didn't have it?
So the initial shock across the bowels, so to speak, was whenever they cut off, uh, suspended funding.
Right.
Temporarily, it did not affect food services, and that was one that was specifically excluded. And then they specifically excluded some other program. And Head Start was the first one to suspend funding and then the next day they were sorted.
Right, that's because of all the hell they caused.
Right. And then I think everything else kind of got sucked into not being targeted either.
And I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think we need to be more cautious than, than not.
Right.
Because we don't know what the unknown, you know, is and everything is, like I said, is not normal.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know Nikki's been playing with this on the, uh, super app. The state is acting like everything's going okay. Uh, I mean, that's where we take our direction from and.
We, we submitted it two weeks ago about education, today it's approved. So, I mean, that doesn't come into play until July one, but, I mean, everything we asked for was approved. So we don't know how much the funding is for each item, but we know that nothing is rejected, so that we're asking for. So that's why I say we're just trucking along as if this is what, because you have to, I mean, you have to keep planning ahead. And then if, if something happens, then we'll just have to, kind of like, okay, we're seeing regroupings, okay.
And then you get just like that airplane you had to be on during COVID.
I think this week, your twenty-sixth is probably intact. I, I don't think that would be linked with, uh, because I know Trump is talking about driving education down to the state level. And at that point, that would be in your mind, uh, you know, how much money does they have to, uh, directly fund?
But then it would still be political because the, the, the bigger states or the more populous, uh, I mean, uh, parishes will get more than what we're getting, because we, we don't have a voice up here. So we're still gonna be behind the eight bars, what I'm saying. I, I guess what I'm saying is, if there's something gonna happen, I'm, I'm trying to protect the interests of the teachers, the support workers, the bus drivers and all those people who are gonna say, who may have to hearsay, uh, hear somebody say, well, you know, you're no longer employed here. Whereas, you know, people with degrees is, you know, they may still be here. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we're being fair.
Yes.
You know, with people that we, you know, probably should.
Yeah, well, I, I.
And I know we can't answer that question.
I won't go out on a limb and assume that the state would award it based off student population.
Right.
Uh, instead of doing something else.
Under normal circumstances.
But, I mean, you know, whenever you're dealing with any political body, whether state or federal, even local, you know, that every now and then it does get squashed. Uh, where it's undependable.
Right.
So, uh, you know, like what we did with title, uh, the Ezra program, it was funded by the two thousand, it was, um, the two thousand ten, sort of, um.
Census.
Census was the, uh, parameters that was used. But we got hammered on that compared to.
Because we were doing so well in two thousand ten.
Yeah, so, you know, it, it's, I, 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 point well taken on all what you said, uh, but right now, we just don't know. Uh, I, I think twenty-six is probably fairly stable, I would hope.
Because if you're saying that it, it may be based off the student population and we have seen that we're steadily losing students, so that, that's still not a mathematical equation that I'm willing to, you know, grasp or hold to. Because I guess what I'm saying, at some point, we're gonna take a lick, so.
But all the other, I would say all, substantial number of the other parishes and states are all on that. So, uh, I, at, we're, they're all in the same boat that we are. I mean, we still have the same number of salaries that we gotta pay, because if you have a decrease of twenty students, that means you're gonna lay off teaching. Uh, I mean, you still have those twenty kids spread out through twelve grades, that doesn't help.
Right.
Uh, I mean, there's no direct relationship. So, and that's the same situation that everybody else has across the country. So, I, I mean, I understand the concept of funding based on the population or student population, but there is, there's certainly a level of fixed cost that goes into it that has to be funded. Anyway, that's all I have on the audit. Uh, I, I mean, other than, you know, those three pages is a good summary of what, what, uh, what pages we're at. Uh, again, we had no findings, we had no, uh, assumptions on the group policy, we got good. And it was, it was a good audit.
That's a great audit.
In class, in class, it was a great audit in class, so.
Yes.
Get this all over again. Probably is my one.
No risk for a weirdo.
No.
So, Kaylee, can we just offer a unanimous resolution commending David and, uh, I guess the financial.
Well, I did it.
You did?
I did it last evening.
Okay.
And I forgot to throw it out for y'all, but I did do it, didn't I?
So her answer is yes.
And I will send it to you tonight. I know.
Slack.
I know.
She did show up later.
I did show it to you. I'm ninety percent done with this job. I have all your stuff for your hotel. You're doing a good job, David, thinking.
Did y'all see the news last night, the CBS news, where they were talking about attendance?
I didn't.
They were talking about a COVID and about attendance. And I just wanted to compliment everyone on how well y'all handled that.
We're trying so hard.
Because we are way above normal on what they were talking about last night.
I think it said thirty percent.
It was bad.
Kind of low. I, I doubt shocking.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, Nick, I, I, I sent the email to Angela today. So if any principal, Rebecca, any of you guys, we're having a Supreme Court here, uh, in Winfield, I think on the twentieth, dealing strictly specifically with Rebecca, the absenteeism, uh, referral sources, DCFS and all those entities, uh, we're gonna, I just don't like to bring them by here. So it's gonna be in Winfield, but it's gonna be from ten to three, so you guys are welcome to.
On the twentieth of February?
Yeah, but just, I'll see you in the email.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's my boss.
They're, they're working hard. Like, their, their secretaries are sending to me every day, and so Angela and I are checking that attendance and looking at those percentages and they're making phone calls and they're following up. And I know the high school y'all regrouped and trying to deal with, um, assigning someone to talk individually to kids, and so it's, um, working hard. Get them to school, yes.
No phone incidents. Everything going good.
All right, let's move to, uh, page on the agenda, adopt school board member training resolution.
I'll speak on that if y'all want me to, just for a second. We're required by law to pass this. It's just basically, we do a press release too, once it's been passed every year, and it just states that you guys are required to get six hours of, um, continuing education every year and that you have received or exceeded it. And, uh, you have. So, they, they tell us to do this and then we put this in a paper.
I'm Nick Moxon.
On favor? Well, I'm assuming we've already had our financial update or we.
Well, that was the audit, that was like the past.
No.
Back up again.
Yeah, uh, three sections, uh, first, four pages or financial report, uh, same as you, uh, said all the time. The next one, the next month, we'll probably farm up a lot of numbers for the property taxes, pretty much to the ten. And we'll have MFP numbers that give advice every year. So at that point, we'll, we'll kind of know about how we're gonna finish out the year. Uh, sales tax fund is the next page, I mean, it's quite long, you know, about where we kind of expected it would be. Lunch fund is kind of the same way. And maintenance fund is actually doing a little bit, uh, that. Maintenance fund should be in there for some reason, it's not, and why I have so much of this.
I see it this year.
Oh, okay, well, they don't know more than I do right now. So anyway, over there, I can, can I copy them or not? Uh, then the next page is balance sheet, this is all funds combined, and this is a monthly, well, first two columns are twenty-three, this week, twenty-three and then twenty-four, and then the month since, since, uh, since June thirty, twenty-four. And, you know, there's not a whole lot to comment on that. Uh, I mean, it's just showing you where we are at the current time, showing you where our money's invested in those first ten or twelve months. And then the final page is on the fund, fund balances between funds, and, uh, this is as of December thirty-first. And it's, it is kind of broad information, I don't want to get too uptight about it, happy with it either. So, you know, that's all I got. How much do I need questions?
District leaders' updates?
It's fine.
Believe it or not. Nothing too much, other, other than glad to be here.
Thank you.
Um, not a lot going on. We, um, we had a great PD day.
Friday.
It was like long, oh my god. Um, some great conversations, teachers, um, parents work together, looking at some data from the service they had done, um, this weekend, sent, and they looked at those things and, um, talked, made some plans. We looked at some, some hard things with them and, and told them we want them to be a part of solving some problems. We're not just trying to throw it all at you, you know, you, you know, here it is. So you look at it and you help us, how, how do you think we can fix some of these things? We talked about with our group how, um, Head Start classically likes to track the at least third grade. And your students who have started out that young by third grade, they should be showing significant gains. And not all of our kids are. There's a lot of factors in that, some is attendance, um, some is, uh, maybe when they enrolled at three, they didn't come. So, uh, Ms. Rhonda Whitten is, we're going back and looking and tracking some data, putting some things together, looking at it, and, and we had the teachers working, doing that as well. But what we were trying to focus on is while Head Start is a comprehensive program and it does encompass the family, health, social, all these things, school readiness. And I told Rhonda, that's where I want us to focus on, is not, because when you say academics to early childhood teachers, they kind of get their feathers ruffled and, and understandably, because some things are not developmentally appropriate for children that young. They're not ready to hold a pencil and write and go into kindergarten perfectly writing. You know, with the research showing what their retention is and what they can and can't do, but there are ways you can do it that do make it developmentally appropriate. And when you. And when you look at the school readiness, that encompasses all those things, including academics. So, just kind of putting a different spin on it where it's not, where they don't feel like you're trying to say, these three-year-olds should be reading when they go to pre-k or, you know, we're not expecting that, but we do want them to know that, we, we do expect while those kids are there to get something out of it.
Yeah, I was about to ask you, what, what, what would be the expectation, because otherwise, they shouldn't be going. But, did you say, did you say that if they start out at Head Start, they may not be performing as well as one who didn't in the early?
Some, there are some, and then you, and that's what we're trying to look at, go back and look at attendance.
That seems like a problem.
Well, that's what we're trying to look at. Is it attendance? Is it, are these only our kids maybe that have IEPs? Is it, you know, what, what's the factor that's causing them to not either be on level or, um, or below?
And see, Nick, if, if it is attendance, that's why it should be required that if they're gonna be enrolled in Head Start, that they have some provision that says you have to go, because otherwise, the numbers that you're looking for down the road, you're not getting, except because we're not enforcing.
And that's what, when we started really monitoring heavily the attendance at each school, and so I have a spreadsheet and I share with them every, like, what your attendance was at every school in August of last year compared to this year. And what we noticed was that your Head Start pre-k, those attendance rates are in the eighties. Whereas, everybody else is in the nineties, but, but there is the perception that, oh, it doesn't really count, so I'm not gonna send them. We can't teach them if they're not there. And so, it's also just trying to encourage parents to, and I'm gonna tell you, I know she's not hearing of it, Natalie and, and Ashley are working really hard to call, make those phone calls, Morgan at the, at pre-k, finding out, will we miss them? We want them here at school, you know, and trying to encourage them to come. So, hopefully, that will, will pay off.
See, Nick, this, this is kind of extreme. The government says if you get food stamps, you can't buy certain food, right? Certain types of food. So, what I'm saying is if, if you're gonna enroll your child in school, it should be some obligation that they be there unless they have legitimate reasons. Because we're trying to provide something that's gonna benefit them down the road, when we're knowing now that if they're starting out, those numbers are not really, you know, producing what we would, we would hope them to.
And that's the trend all the way through high school.
Right.
Is that your students, when you look at, and I, and he has said in enough literacy meetings with Maria, you know, when you sit and you look at, at kids and you just can't move up to that next, and then you sit down and you look at their attendance and they miss so much school, it no matter of intervention that you provide is gonna matter if they're not there to get it. So.
But they don't, you don't have policies for, um, attendance and?
So, it's not mandatory. So, on one hand, you can't make them come.
Right.
But years ago, we've got a little thing typed up. It's not really a policy, but the board passed, I guess, like a resolution. It was back when Mr. Tucker was our transportation, uh, what was he, child welfare?
Child welfare.
Attendance, you know, it was, he had more than everything. But, we had a particular family that just, they weren't coming, weren't coming, and we had talked and worked with it. And so, the board passed, and like I said, it's not policy, I'm saying it was a resolution, but then if a child misses more than fifteen days, they can be dropped, unexcused. And so, with our three-year-olds, we can do the same thing. And what our pre-k standards say is not mandatory, but once you enroll your child, you understand that the expectation is they come to school. So, um, we looked at that. Natalie and Ashley both have been working on what can they, how can they put that out to parents without it being, feel threatening, but at the same time, I mean, cause you have some of them say, well, they're three, then I'm just about to send them. And you don't want that. But, and then two, you look at with, um, our enrollment, the way it's been, if I tell Maria, your kid missed ten days, he can't come back to school, well, then you lose another child, and, um, you've got holes to check deal.
But, I mean, if, if you're trying to provide for them and they're not there, and, and so, I mean, you gotta do, you, you can't continue.
And that's why our approach is, uh, we want your kid to school. Bring your kid to school, you know.
You can't continue to be soft when, when you see.
But at some point, and like I said, at some point, with them that young, it's almost like, um, neglect, because they're, here's this program, free of charge. They're gonna get fed, they're gonna get taught, they're gonna get all these things that's gonna help them later, and you're not bringing them. You know, you enrolled them, but now you're not bringing them.
So, you can't.
You know, at, at one point, I know there were waiting lists to getting in. It's not the situation.
Right.
So, are we receiving federal money for every child?
Yeah, I mean, all of our, well, the three-year-olds is, is all federal. The four-year-olds comes through the state, but there's some federal money there too, so I, I can't, I don't know if it's federal, but.
They didn't give you, they didn't give you guidelines on attendance, other than they can totally federal.
Well, they just, it's just a non-mandatory program. And once they get into the MFAP, which is kindergarten up, it's mandatory. But prior to that, because it's not, I guess, because it's not tied to that funding, it's not mandatory.
I'm just of the opinion that if, 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 if I've got eight kids in a twenty class, and those kids are under eighty percent enrollment, then what do I do when they show up to school? Because now their way are high, and I'm reteaching, and I'm reteaching, and I'm reteaching, and I'm hindering those who are, and I, I can't, I can't imagine what you're going through. But, I mean, there's got to be some, I don't know what the answer is, but, I mean,
I think it's.
Kind of, hard love is good love.
Right.
Yeah, but I think it's a fine line, because you don't, like you said, wanna be threatening and say, well, we'll just drop your child, because you don't wanna put a bad taste in their mouth about public school, because we see it every day. They're pulling them out of school.
For real.
There you go.
And then they won't even come back ever.
Yeah, but you, you're not threatening them if they signed this beforehand. They, they are agreeing, uh, to do this, just like when you get your driver's license, you're agreeing not to speed, but if you speed, you're gonna get caught. I'm not saying be hard on them. What I'm saying is be a little bit more aggressive with regards to why your kid need to be in school. Why it's important, because the numbers that we're looking for is not being productive, is actually being counterproductive, and your kid is not getting what they should get. You know, cause it's, it's a difference between when you're starting out at three versus starting out at five. You're behind.
Oh, right.
And usually when you're behind in school, you don't catch up, especially if you're coming from a certain geographical area. Or, or if, if you can't catch up. So, I, I think we just need to be, I, I, I almost stopped short of saying apology right now. But I think we need to look at other options other than what we're doing to try to make sure that they, uh, get the understanding that we're not forcing you, we're just telling you what's in the best interest. Because remember, many parents don't know what's in the best interest of, other than, you know, hugging them at, at home with socialization, getting them acquainted with other individuals, putting them in a, a different, uh, norm that they can adjust to what society is like. So, there's a, there's a big benefit of them being at school and then coming home and receiving some, you know, reinforcement. So.
And not to mention, if they wait until they go to kindergarten and they have a learning disability or something, it may be a while before that's recognized. We can catch this early, so, you know, as they progress, that's something we need to stress to them as well.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not saying be cruel by no stretch.
Well, and we're looking at things like that for our, our enrollment period that's coming up, starting in March. Kind of doing it a little different where there's more, um, not, not necessarily just one-on-one, but some smaller meetings with parents, explaining some of those things, wanting to come in more and see, um, have some registration days that are on school days, where they can come in and see what's going on, see the expectations, and, you know, kind of what your child would, would be doing during the day.
Let's just solve this right now. Kaylee, ask AI, what is, what is the best, what is the best remedy for Head Start's kids to stay enrolled in school? Let's see if it works.
AI is gonna say have a policy?
It's probably educate the parents.
Yeah.
Educate the parents.
And how's it made there?
I'll text you.
Well, I mean, it, you know, we're joking, but I'm like Randy, s- some people, uh, need a little reinforcement. A parent called me just before I came, and I, I texted Kate. Uh, they had some issues or questions, but their comment was, well, I don't wanna go up there and bother them. I said, no, you should be going up there and bothering them about your kids. So, my point is, is what Randy's saying, a lot of, a lot of parents just don't understand that. I think most good teachers, they would love to see parents at school versus not coming to school other than when there's an issue. So, I think what Randy's saying goes to this point. I think a better relationship with, uh, not just the community, but the parent and everybody included in there, uh, I think we can make significant changes that may not be harmful to the people that we're trying to help. Cause, cause nobody in this room wants to hurt a parent or a kid. You definitely don't want them not to come to school.
Well, the more positive our relationships are starting out, we can help, you know, build those as they go on, so.
And I know, you know, the Head Start and the preschool and all that, they reach out to the parents continually. They, they, y'all, y'all work with the parents a lot. And, uh, but, you know, not only should they understand that their child will do better at school by having that, but also, I would think in this day and age, if you use the part, you're not paying childcare for that child anymore. You know, you're saving yourself a bundle if you, you know, you do.
They're not eating you out of house at home.
You would think there'd be a line. You would think there would be a line out there trying to get.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And those mornings when it's cold and you don't wanna get up, it's, you gotta go ahead and get that kid up, get him out there and go with it, you know.
I like the idea of having the parents come during the school, because I myself, my son, he started kind of early at the Head Start program. I was gonna wait a year, but they said, come visit, just come see. He walked in the cafeteria, grabbed his lunch thing and took off, and I was like, well.
There you go.
I lost him.
Right, right.
So, you know, it, just seeing that myself, I was like, yeah, he's ready. He's ready.
Right.
And that's for most people, parents lose their kid is at the cafeteria. And they're just like, what's going on?
For real, cause you did grab that value to him, right?
I did.
You know, that played a role. No, but Nick, good, I mean, Monica, good job. I know it's, it's, it's tough, uh, man, I, I guess I'm saying, you know, let's not give up and just kind of give, you know, all we got, even when we feel like we don't have anything to give, cause there are some kids who actually benefit.
Oh, absolutely.
Cause I, I used to be one hundred percent against Head Start until mine went, and I seen the improvement. And I'm glad that, you know, that she did, because it made her a, a better student. And I know that there's a lot of our parents that could actually benefit. So, I, I guess I'll say, uh, Randy, whatever it is that we can do, you know, or just support you guys.
I, I got a question. You alluded to this, but you did go into it. Would you think your school would run better if you had a policy on attendance?
I mean, I'd probably put more meat behind it, but I.
Would it help your teachers?
It would.
Would it help your classrooms?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
If you had what? I didn't get.
A policy that just says.
Policy on attendance.
But, but Nick, based on what he's saying, if you guys were looking to that.
If you really bring, bring what you have, and let's see if what, it needs to be updated, because we can take that existing, whatever we call it.
Vervish, yeah.
Yeah, vervish, and bring in and say, let's figure this out and let's put this back out.
Let me ask you this. Since Head Start, let's just say Head Start started Head Start, since it's all federal funding, can you make policy like that?
Yeah, so, there, right now, and, and that's something we've looked at, trying to, we act and use the school board's policy. But there are a, a lot of school districts, probably most of them, their Head Start program, and it may be the exact school board policy, but it's in their Head Start policy manual. But so, our Head Start funds aren't, aren't just at three-year-olds, it's the three and four-year-olds, which is good because of it being a comprehensive service. It, it, it helps to have it at both. But, we have looked at, and I've gotten a few different Louisiana, uh, school systems Head Start policy manual. And in our very first year of doing it, we had some, we actually had LaSalle that we had gotten a grant from, and we went through the school board policy manual and matched them up. So, we had, they were pretty much the same. Um, so, we never pulled out and made just a separate one. And we could, we, and we probably need to, cause like when we're monitored, that's what we just refer them to the school board policy manual. But, they like to see that you've got them pulled out over here. And so, we could. Whereas, there is a school board attendance policy, we could just make it.
Tailored.
Tailored to the early childhood, the three and four-year-olds, um, and have that. So, I, I have got some other school districts, those policies that we can look at.
Let me, let me just give you the history on that. We were gonna do that back when Mr. Lett was here, but because we had adverse resistance, because of dislike of her, we never did it. So, yes, we can do it, we just stopped shy of doing it, because we had individuals on here that didn't wanna do it. And, cause we, she strongly considered that. And, uh, I think we can look at it. We don't have to be the most strenuous, but if we got something.
I think you take some of like Maria's ideas and, and go, uh, if you miss this many days, you get the phone call from them, if you miss this, but when you get to here, you don't put our teachers and our school in such a way, we have to let you go.
Well, now, the phone call, they can get a phone call every day. That is a Head Start requirement. They have to get a phone call every day.
You know, you know what policy means.
You have to make contact every day. And so, we do it with three and four-year-olds. You have to make contact. And I laughed at Morgan's sheet, when she sends it to Ms. McCann. It's got exactly what they say out there, one hundred percent.
One hundred percent.
Whatever they tell them. Yeah, yeah, if they're missing. It's, uh, when they call, and I mean, you, you could say, yeah, he's homesick, and not, he's been in Monroe already. Um, so, they're gonna put what they say. But, yes, it is a requirement that you, uh, make that contact every day.
And even, and what also is on there, if she can't get the parent to answer, she says, no answer, send a message for a dojo. So, it's not like, she's just stopping. She's moving on to the next level too, to send a message.
It's a wonderful program. I worked for Head Start many moons ago.
Really?
I did, when it was LaSalle Community, yeah. Before it came to Columbia, I worked in all of.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it got make policy, um, stuff like that, you know, but, yeah, it was, um, I, I've been associated with it, um.
That's good.
Head Start for many years.
You know a little bit, a little bit of the edge of the memory. Sounds like a committee. Anything else?
I need to add, um, uh, we have, what was it, State Department, my dad, which contacted me a couple of weeks ago. And in a couple of weeks, we'll have onsite monitoring of the electric program. They, uh, I think it's March the fourth, fourth through the sixth. They're gonna do a meeting to come in, and then they'll actually go in the classrooms and they have a set of guidelines. But, but they will, um, go by and they'll let us know how the Jack program is going, and if it's lacking, and, and any combinations. So, I forgot to mention that, so. Well, let you know how that goes.
Brian, you think technology?
I don't have anything specific. Just kind of fixing things as they break.
All right, James?
Uh, transportation, we're rolling buses every day. This is the busy time of the year, late winter, early spring, with athletics going everywhere, uh, high school and junior high. So, trying to map that out every day is definitely a challenge on my part, keeping the buses on the road. Maintenance, uh, every day, we're fixing something at a school that needs to be repaired. So, we're, we're rolling along. I need bus drivers up. I've got three subs on buses right now. And you know anybody, send them my way, please.
Well, I've tried. I've tried. Kristi?
Um, this month is February is CTE month. I made a post today, um, did you share? Um, on the high school page, um, just saying what CTE is, describing it, what it means, that all, basically, all of our students are CTE students. And then I'm gonna, um, post as we go for the rest of the month, kind of spotlight our programs today and then cyber society. I don't know if you saw that post. We had a student, they were doing like, I guess, radio frequency waves and talking about aliens. It's, it's internet safety, but it's also cyber, anything, you know, anyway. He did his own research, his own presentation, and you go check that out, and you'll see that that was a big thing for him. Um, but I'll do all the programs as we go through the rest of the month. And then next week is FFA week, and Jenny's got tons of stuff planned, so we'll post all of that next week too.
What about the, um, basketball? When does it start? Elementary?
I know that the forms, yeah, I know the forms went out, but I'm not sure when the start date is. I will ask. I will ask.
She was doing the schedules. And doing those teams.
My department's, uh, February one count looks surprisingly good, um, considering what enrollment's been like. Um, it, you know, obviously, it's lays on the, this hall, especially, you know, Teresa, Johnny, you know, Tanya, uh, Jamie now, um, have a huge part in that, but it took every single school, because we were, I mean, they were turning out referrals with like a twenty-four hour turnaround to have to have the IEPs so that we could get money, um, you know, for those kids. So, it, it, it was a lot of, uh, late nights and long days and everything. So, uh, really appreciative for these ladies that got, got a lot done at the last second to try to, um, especially with, we had, we had a ton of kids move in, like that week, we had like four kids move in. And did, in order for us to have credit for them on there, we had to get all of their stuff done, and they made it happen. So, very grateful, um, to them. Our, um, transitions program with the grant support got a shout-out at the state level the other day at the start of one of the. the other day at the start of one of the diverse learners calls, so that was very, um, I, I didn't know it was gonna happen. So, um, I went running down the hall, it was, I was like, oh, oh, I was like, look at this, like, this is us, they're gonna say something about us, you know? So it was, um, it's always nice to be recognized at the state level for the things that are going on, and I have a very small, um, part of that work. It's, it's the teachers and therapists that work at the high school and with the high school students that are getting that done, and they really deserve the recognition that they got. Um, just, you know, today, I was, uh, you know, texting Ms. McCann and some supervisors. I've had an opportunity to be in schools a little bit more than in classrooms than what I have been lately. And we have really challenged, um, teachers to try some new strategies with kids, um, and without getting into any of the details, I just got to see it in action today, and it was, it was amazing. And, um, especially this little group of, I love every grade and all the teachers and everything, but I was at Mr. Lynn's school, and these first graders have, um, I mean, they, you've probably heard about them, it's, it's a challenging group of kids. It's a very high percentage of kids with very significant disabilities, and those teachers, and the sped teachers, and the, the pairs. I mean, it was amazing what I saw today, and, um, there have been a lot of, um, I think, tough times, and the leadership in that school has, um, supported the teachers through working with these kids. And we've, we've got a lot of, um, things going that maybe we haven't done in the past. Um, we've got a kid who's receiving, um, services from a teacher that comes all the way from Shreveport, because we don't have anybody in the area that, um, that can do that, so we've had to really think out of the box that, um, for certain needs, like hearing impaired or orientation and mobility, um, and that sort of stuff. Some of it's virtual, some of it's hybrid, some of it's, and, um, it's really amazing to see when you can get everything that a child really deserves together in one space with the right group of adults, how, how much they can grow. So, um, just, it, it's, it's nice to see, even, you know, here in Caldwell Parish, that, you know, we can put together these bundles of supports with amazing people and just seeing kids grow.
What do you mean when you say hybrid?
Uh, so, uh, the teacher that I'm talking about specifically, she comes once a week all the way from Shreveport, but then she meets virtually with, um, this student. There is no one in northeast Louisiana that is certified to, um, teach what she teaches. So when she's hybrid, either a teacher or a parent or the speech-language pathologist, somebody sits with the child and works with him. So we're actually lucky, she was planning on retiring, but she has fallen in love with Grayson and this particular child, and so even though she's retiring, she's gonna keep working with us. So, we've been really blessed, and I, I looked at her, because, um, we have another student at the high school who receives orientation and mobility, and, uh, there's only about two people in the state that do it, and they will not come here. So, um, we have a student at the high school that is, his, his teacher's actually in, um, Washington State, I think. But Lindsay, our APE teacher, and our physical therapist log on with him, and he basically coaches them to provide the services that, and, no, I mean, is it, is it best case scenario? No, but, I mean, this is something that we wouldn't be able to, to provide for this child at all if it wasn't for this. So we're, we are making it work, we are doing the best we can, and I know we all fuss about technology, but in some, sometimes with, with things like this, we've been able to make some things happen that we, um, we're, we're pretty excited about.
Yeah, 'cause when she first told me that, she said, I have a, I have to make the orientation and mobility go on gym, and I said, wait, what? I mean, and that's to work with a visually impaired child, and I said, how are you doing that? And she said, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, but he does, he, he instructs and they assist and they do it all, I think.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Used to, you didn't have all that, you know, and, you know, we're very lucky to be able to do that for our children.
When you have all, you know, when you only have one student in, you know, the entire parish that needs these services for hearing impaired or for, um, you know, not, you know, needs help navigating the, um, school building because of vision, you know, we have to, you know, we have to find creative ways to do it, so this is where we are now.
That's all, uh, superintendent report?
All right. Well, I'm gonna kind of piggyback on what they said about, we had the professional development day on Friday, and so, um, across the board, we really tried to fine-tune that professional development so that we could really hone in on a back-to-basics type approach, and I, I don't know if y'all have seen the news, but Louisiana's making all kinds of gains in their, uh, reading and math, and a lot of that is based on just back-to-basics, what we know is really good, so we spent a lot of, um, our focus areas were oral reading strategies and literacy strategies with all of our students, and, um, we had some of our own teachers who actually presented that, and our own, uh, directors and supervisors, uh, we really got into the math concept development and looking at that, uh, engagement strategies, um, to, to have kids talking and doing the things in classrooms for them to be engaged. And then, of course, we have the team building and the surveys, but, um, at the high school, we, uh, had our implementation of the Clinton strengths, which is what the teachers went through in the fall, um, to really focus on their strengths. I would love to take the whole board through it, I've got the books, we just have got the plan of retreat for us to do it, and Maria took the test, and Baron took it, because they were, um, helping with, with a project in Baton Rouge. But, um, excited because, um, and Ms. Percy, you may speak to this a little bit, but y'all had your big kickoff yesterday and testing tomorrow, you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, we just, um, all the students would be taking the survey, so we went through, uh, Ms. Wales went, um, to Baton Rouge, uh, with Ms. McCann and a group to, um, to learn how to kind of read a list to the students, so she did her presentation yesterday. We just had all the students come into the auditorium, and we went through the PowerPoint and just talked about, like, what benefit it is gonna be for them to know, like, their strengths, and they'll be able to use it like in their future jobs or family, or, you know, in high school, whether we're using them in groups, how to organize groups, using their strengths. Um, so, we kinda, you know, she said, I felt like I was kinda filled with chocolate, you know, like. She, like, they came in, she had music going, like, we had, they came in, so they were all kinda, you know, she's, you know, it's like, if you do this, you get a prize, you know? I said, yeah, it's kinda what it felt like, and we wanted it to be a positive experience. So tomorrow, all the students will take the assessment, so we've spent most of our day today kinda organizing what that's gonna look like at the high school, so, um, we've had a, a different schedule built, almost like a club schedule built, so they can go and put their second hour teacher, they're gonna take the assessment. And, um, we're gonna, we're gonna be talking to them about how, the, what the benefit's gonna be, so they don't just, you know, click and just rush through.
I really, I really.
It's not an academic test, it's like, this is for you to test to see what your strengths are, and how we can build on those in sports and all the things, so we want them to, um, I would say, take their time, I know it's a time test. We want them to look at their responses and give the best answers so that they can find their strengths.
I really hope they do buy into it, because my daughter took it as well, and she's at the high school. And I was telling Baron at first, she was just, oh, well, you know, she read her results, and she was like, oh, okay. But when we sat through the presentation and she got to hear all the benefits of knowing these things, and, um, she was really excited about it, so I'm hoping that other kids, you know.
Right, because we didn't want a true, like, we want a true result on what it is, so, because there are certain, certain kids that we wanna know what makes them tick.
That's right.
Some are, some are strong-willed students, like, you're like, all right, what is, what is their strength that we can build on to, like, reach certain kids, so.
What I love about it, and even the presentation on Friday, is so often we're trying to fix people's weaknesses.
That's right.
And we're trying to fix what you're not good at. Um, the, the premise behind this is everybody's strong at something, let's really work on fine-tuning what your strengths and what makes you unique, so that we're focusing on the good and not trying to fix the things that just don't come naturally. And it doesn't mean you can't be good at every, at other things, but what comes natural, what brings you joy, and what makes you tick, you know? And so, um, I'm super excited about that work, um, that we're doing, so.
I had this guy about fifteen years ago, that we used to take athletes to for ACT, and, um, his philosophy was just the opposite of what mine would have been. It would have been to take a twelve English and try to move it to a seventeen, but his deal was, let's take a twenty math and move it to a twenty-seven.
And that's basically what they said.
And that's what this is, and it's just, uh, I never thought of anything like that, we'd like, let's take what they're good at and make it better, because it's a lot harder to pull this English up than it is to take this good math score.
Well, uh, when we were at LSU, um, Joe Burrow's mom was actually the keynote speaker, and so she tied it in very well for us and said, you know, while Joe was at Ohio State, he was on the sidelines, you know, and he wasn't getting in and he wasn't getting to, but the coaching style there was very different, when he came to LSU, it was more of, uh, what are you good at? And what are the four people, like, you know, Jomari, Jay, all of those people, what are they all good at? And let's build an offense that focuses on their strengths and what they're really good at, and she said, what do you get out of it? You get a national championship, so when you stop trying to fix the, the things that you think are wrong and really kind of focus on those things that are good, then we can move the needle.
And that, like, to what Bo said, that was one of the things, like, if you have a student that loves tennis and very good at tennis, and they're struggling in math, do you hire a, an extra tennis coach, or do you hire a math tutor? Hire a tennis coach, that's what they're good at, that's what they strive at. And you can throw in the math in there while you're doing that, but if that's what they're good at, let's focus on what they're good at, you know? I like that.
Good, exciting, exciting. I guess Kaylee, you wanna talk about?
LSPA?
Yes.
Sure. Um, I gave you all a, um, Mano folder packet, it has your confirmation to your hotel room. I did email you that also this afternoon. Um, there's a tax exempt form in there for you to hand to the hotel front desk, I also emailed them that, but, uh, I think they want you to hand it to them also. Uh, I put a little note in there, like I always do, maybe check-in time, checkout time. There's a tentative agenda, they don't have the agenda set, she said it'll be set next week. When I get it, I'm sure I'll push you one in the mail and email. And I think that's, I think that's it.
They've already been made, so, thank you for making it all.
No problems, they're, they're pretty easy to work with.
All right. Well, if we, if we don't have any comments from the board, we can ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm the most, motion, we adjourn.